We shouldn't aspartame. We shouldn't put anything in our bodies you can't pronounce.
Hey, good point.
Probably something and many something.
Lobster tails. Wow. You really went all out, Lester.
Well, hey, you know, I try, I try. You were out of asking king crab legs, are you?
Is this so they'll talk fast?
Ah, yes. Oh, that's great. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'd like to call this Wednesday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the City of Manassas Park Planning Commission to Order. The time is seven P. M. My name is Lester Finkel, sitting this evening are Martha Collier, John Evans, a lot of men saying, and Michael Beckett's. Our first order of business is the info ca- the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Beckett's, will you kindly lead us?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next agenda item is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, would anyone care to make a motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion ca- abstention, motion carries unanimously. Next gen item is adoption of minutes from December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Are there any changes? Anyone found for the meeting minutes? Okay. Seeing none, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes as is?
Moved.
Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any members of the public present to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move along. Tonight's item is item seven A. It's presentation of the City of Manassas Park Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-eight. We will just be having the presentation, the initial presentation this evening, and at this time, I'll turn it over to our city manager.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So to start off, this year's CIP presentation will be shorter. The governing body asked that we just really focus on FY twenty-four projects. Unfortunately, you guys are going to get a lot more projects that will prob- then will probably be presented to the governing body because there's a lot of FY twenty-four projects right now that may not make the cut once we get revenues in and see what we can actually fund. So your presentation will likely be longer than than the governing body's and presentation. But it is the five-year CIP, so I'm going to give the summary of what's happening kind of across the five years and then but the project by project slides will just be for FY twenty-four this evening. But we did provide a read ahead packet for you all that has all the projects listed on there. So feel free to please take a look at that and shoot us any emails with any inquiries you have here. And also, again, if there's if there's projects that that are not listed there that you want to see on there. Again, I know we talked about the skate park last year as well. You know, the governing body is going to be discussing their priorities here soon. You may want to advocate things like that for, but it's not on here. It's always been on kind of a desired CIP, but it hasn't been pushed to the front by the governing body. But if that's something you guys want to do, I encourage you to communicate with the governing body. You have the vice mayor right here as well, so to pass along that information about that that being a priority, if that's still it, so. So tonight, I'll give the five-year model for the general fund and enterprise funds, just giving you kind of a in-depth analysis, kind of where we're at across the five years. And then we'll just turn it over to each department to go over the project slides. We'll kind of start with kind of the overhead administration and I.T. and the general services components, and then turn it over to each department to go over their their different elements for their different projects. So I'll start with the five-year model here. You can see kind of the the amounts here. We're about fifty-seven million dollars over five years. Really, it's closer to just above fifty million when you exclude the ARPA-funded CIP items. And the ARPA budget, again, is separately presented to the governing body. But you can see, you'll see in the spreadsheet that we eventually publish all the different projects that are already approved via ARPA for funding from the CIP. We'll see if the governing body wants to change that this coming budget cycle or not. But so we have about six and a half million dollars funded via ARPA. Overall, though, you can see we're at twenty-one million dollars in FY twenty-four. That's why I said there's a lot of front-loaded projects in FY twenty-four that I'm not sure are gonna are gonna survive. But there's some pretty big-ticket items here, just to kind of go over from the top. So transportation will likely remain that way because a lot of this is funded by external sources. So there's three big projects that are really driving the variance. You see the rest of the years, it's kind of hovering around the one and a half to two million dollars. And in year one, it's it's seven point six million. Big project is VRE Garage, so we received about two and a half million dollars that our transportation team and Calvin's team were able to secure to contribute towards that garage. That's a big chunk of money for that. And then we had an additional close to two million dollars for different Manassas Drive projects, one for resurfacing. That's still not clear that we're going to get that grant, but hopefully we get the the funding from the state to do a complete resurfacing of the majority of Manassas Drive, because we know it needs it. And then the second one, we've been approved for grants, over a million dollars for safety enhancements all along Manassas Drive. So those three projects alone are kind of driving that variance for transportation here for for year one. But that will likely remain because, again, that's not that's not taxpayer money per se. It's a lot of grant-funded projects that our team has done a great job in securing for for our city. For fire, that that looks inflated this year, but that's really a lot of the ARPA spending actually is on the fire department. There's some renovations we want to do with the fire station, other projects listed there. So that's kind of driving that that increase there. For the community development department, you have the smart meters across these two years. That's why these two numbers look a lot higher. It's about a million dollars per year there. And then for Parks and Rec, you see some some larger numbers. Some of that is ARPA-funded as well in this year. And then really going out these years, you have some major renovations to the the facility at the Signal Bay Water Park, the actual structures there, the bathhouse and the pavilion as well. Those are those are all big projects that we're we're hoping to knock out in in the CIP. And that's kind of driving some of these big numbers here up front for for Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec, again, was a lot of their infrastructure has been neglected. You'll see when they get to that slide, most of our infrastructure is from the nineties. So it's really time to to enhance, invest in our parks as well. One big change this year, you'll see the schools actually in our CIP. And I'll talk about that next slide, which is not on your packet, because that was kind of a last-minute addition. It's a discussion, ongoing discussion I've had with the schools about kind of what's what's changing with schools and state funding and kind of where where the city is going to have to step up now to help out our school system. So you will see the actual schools now incorporated, their their capital funding. We're going to go to a new model this year in budgeting where we'll have our operating contributions to them and then also separate contributions to capital. We've done that on occasion in the past, so if you all remember the the high school roof, that was separately called out in the CIP as as extra funding. And I want to say in FY seventeen, there was some school buses as well that were thrown on in that that budget as well. So it's not, there has been times when we've done this, but now we have to just make it consistent to to enable our schools to function. I'll discuss that next slide. And then Administration, General Services. So the city hall payments start in FY twenty-four, very small, it's only five hundred thousand in FY twenty-four, then goes up to a million in FY twenty-five, then one and a half million in FY twenty-six, and then kind of stays static like that. And that's just to give time for all these two-over-twos to get built up, which are paying for for this building. But other big projects in in that, you have the E R P project, which we talked about last night with the governing body. That's about a million dollars that we're forecasting here in FY twenty-four to implement a new software, all the different software elements, plus getting that implementation support. And then a big, big project here is the acquisition of the the building for the Community Development Department, which is Development Services and Public Works, along with some of our school facility, facility team and transportation. We want to invest in them because they they are kind of the last piece that hasn't gotten a facility. Every every city department has been served except for for those elements, the kind of the Public Works and Community Development elements. So that's that's why this number is big as well. But I'm going to be looking to utilize kind of development to pay for that. So hopefully, we won't actually have to tap into that money. So that's kind of, stay tuned for that, but that's still in the works with the governing body there. So that's kind of driving kind of the big numbers here in in twenty-four before it levels off there. And you can see kind of for kind of some other major takeaways, the new development, community development facility. I didn't talk about the school security. That's also part of this administration and general services for the facility section. We're investing a lot of money on safety enhancements for our school systems. That's already been approved by the governing body. Some of it's being grant-funded by the federal government, and then the rest of it, we're financing over ten years. And then also the the city hall lease payments that kick in as well. Any questions on the summary here, the five-year? No? Okay, so school systems, we need to talk about this. There's there's a change happening with state funding besides the error. There's an error right now, I guess, in budgeting that's reducing some funding to schools, but we hope that that's going to be addressed by the General Assembly. But regardless, there is actually a a decrease in the increased amounts that we're accustomed to for schools. So if you look at this number, it looks much larger in twenty-four than what we're getting in twenty-three. But that's because the schools are actually carrying over about one point five million dollars that they received in previous years for capital, for one-time capital, that they're able to kind of carry over because they didn't spend it all on capital. They're not projecting to spend it all on capital in FY twenty-three, so they're going to carry it over to FY twenty-four. So this number is inflated, and in fact, their their budget is almost flat when it comes to the state revenue. And why is that different? Because since my time here, we've been used to the schools getting about two, you know, around two million dollar increases each year from the state. So the state's been contributing their their funding to our school systems because they realize kind of our inability to pay and because enrollments still were kind of flattish, right? With enrollments dropping, if you if you watch the superintendent's presentation and and the governing body will see that as well, enrollments now are declining, which means that state funding is going to not grow as much as it used to. So so we need to kind of be aware of that. However, you're still going to have a lot of capital overhead, right? We still have these buildings and all the equipment there that we still have to maintain. And the other item that we have to take care of with schools is teacher pay, right? Every other, the the rest of the school systems are all increasing pay. So that's going to be continual variable costs that are going to grow, even though the superintendent is reducing F T E levels as enrollment goes down. You still have to, we still have to pursue kind of pay raises as well. So there's going to be some financial pressure that the city is going to have to kind of step up and make sure that we're adequately funding our schools. And that's why you see that change in the CIP model in this year. And I'll spend more time going over that with the governing body when I talk about the the overall city budget as well. But again, now that you see kind of state funding is is beginning to flatten or increase, which, again, we're going to continue to monitor, but you can kind of see the projections of what's happening. And of course, anything can change, right? The General Assembly could just say, and then the governor in the next year say, hey, guess we're just increasing funding overall for schools, but just keep an eye on our enrollments as they continue to decline, that the state is is not going to aggressively fund increases like they they were before. And and then again, the future L C I, the calculation for kind of the need may go down if we're successful economically as well. That hasn't happened yet. So the L C I is kind of still the same, so we're still going to see that impact in the future as well. So we got to kind of keep an eye on that and make sure that we're maintaining kind of the funding levels for for our school systems. So like I said, this year, kind of different where the city will kind of, proposing the city to kind of step in and help the schools out with kind of that large capital overhead that they have, even though they have, they're going to have declining state revenues to continue to main that, maintain that overhead. But we'll continue to monitor what's going to happen year by year over the revenues, and hopefully, the state will fix the the funding error as well, which will will give some breathing room for for our school system. So overall, this number, we talked about the fifty-seven million, but that didn't include the one point five million that the schools are carrying over. So in reality, if you include that one point five million, total spending for the general fund is fifty-eight point eight million. You can see half of that is for facilities and grounds and transportation. We talked about transportation. We talked about facilities, that facilities component, of course, including the city hall lease payments, the the community development building itself, which is a pretty big investment, all the security enhancements we're doing with the schools. There's a lot of investment happening right now in our facilities and grounds, and that's driving that. And then you can see the other the other numbers for for the other departments. Fleet, that's another one where you're going to see the numbers here about some pretty big inflation happening with with fleet. That's that's driving up the cost, and that was expected. If anyone who, we had to decrease the personal property tax rate this year because overall, all vehicles' assessment values skyrocketed by about twenty-five percent. So and guess what? We had to buy vehicles, so we're seeing that twenty-five percent increase in cost as well for our fleet. So hopefully, those numbers will come down, but you know, that we're, you know, we're seeing that impact as well. Water and sewer, not a lot of change from last year. The kind of the big, big drivers, of course, for for water and sewer projects. You see the facility project here, kind of that's the enterprise fund contributions towards the new community development building, which includes Public Works and the maintenance of our enterprise infrastructure. That's why there's a piece funded from there as well. You have the rugby, the rugby yard, which Calvin will talk about a bit later, and kind of the the price increases associated with that. And then you have some other projects like SCADA that we're looking to do to to enhance our our sewer system as well. So overall, twenty-seven million dollar spending, which is pretty close to where we were in last year's model, and still fifty-seven percent of that is debt. U O S A debt did go up a little bit. They did some new issuances of debt, not for additional capacity for the city, but just to kind of support their ongoing capital maintenance requirements for the sewer system. So you'll see that number go up. But in the long run, if you if you, this chart kind of goes out to FY thirty, you do see a dip in U O S A debt. So that's going to help in the long run the sewer fund, but not in the short run. So in the short run, we're going to still see the pressures of high debt when it comes to to U O S A. And then you can see how much seventeen percent of this is for actual maintenance of the total budget. We're spending about seventeen percent just for maintenance and upgrades to the system, and then eight percent for the water system phases that Calvin will be discussing here, most of those which will at least start, have started in twenty-three or will start in FY twenty-four. And then thirteen percent for facility, the biggest driver, that's the community development building. Stormwater, this number continues to go up as we we're going to get closer to implementing the stream restoration project. I'm removing the name Russia Branch Stream Restoration, because we're not most likely going to pursue Russia Branch Stream Restoration. It's going to be another stream or two that we're going to look at across the city to actually achieve our goals. So we were hoping to jump on an Arlington contract, so I could have already presented that to you all in the governing body about what the solution was. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that for legal reasons. So Calvin and his team are working on a R F P that will be issuing, so we can pursue a public-private partnership to hopefully reduce the price tag for stream restoration. And we are going to be, with governing body approval, submitting of congressional-directed funding support requests to our senators to help us fund stream restoration projects to comply with EPA mandate. So hopefully, that will all reduce the price tag on our residents and reduce the pressure to incur any debt related to to stormwater. But you can see that's right now, we're still keeping the old numbers there, just to be ultra-conservative about what what stream restoration is going to take. But we hope through different grant applications and and the different projects that that we're getting private sector support for, we're going to be able to to reduce that price tag for our residents. Okay, so total CIP numbers, not counting the actual debt payments for water, sewer and stormwater. You're looking at a total across the city, schools, everything we're doing, transportation and utilities, about ninety-five million dollars. It's really more like eighty-nine million when you reduce the the ARPA funding, which is one-time money. You can see about half of that or over half of that is our different enterprise funds and transportation. You can almost treat transportation as its own fund as well, because it's funded largely by transportation funding sources. There are a handful of projects there that the city, city is funding this year. And you can see kind of, again, no change in these other numbers from the other slides, so I won't spend too much time on that. And then again, we talked about all the additional facility investments that that were taken on over this, these five years. So are there any questions about the overall five-year summary? Because now we're just going to jump into kind of project by project for FY twenty-four. Okay. So we're going to start again with administration and I.T., and I will turn it over to both Keith and Don.
Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So like Laso said, Donna and I will sort of share the duties in briefing the next several slide, which is going to be I.T.-based. So for software for fiscal year twenty-four, the biggest project is going to be G I S enhancement at seventy-five thousand, and a server operating system upgrades at ten thousand, for a total of eighty-five thousand for software. The G I S piece, initially, when we onboarded S three G I S two years ago, we focused primarily on functional needs, seeing things on a map. So we we worked on putting data, our data into each map layer for specific function, land use, parcel assessment, and then tracking fleets to include public safety fleet for situational awareness. Now that we sort of got those function in place and they're working well, generally speaking, we're moving toward the next phase, which is creating that G I S base layer for future integration with either core system or new technologies as we move forward. So that's the intent of of the enhancement. We're also looking to create more dashboard for data analytics internally for staff as well as public-facing dashboard for residents. Any question on software? I'll turn it over to Don for hardware.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To start off with our hardware, our main hardware that that's just the hardware is our laptops and computers. We have initially about two hundred computers in the city, laptops and towers, desktops, and we're looking to change our thing up to a four-year cycle, meaning replacement of every, every year of fifty computers each year. Our infrastructure, we're looking at as this year, we're doing our V M upgrade here at city hall. Next year, we want to do the upgrade over at P D, so we have a disaster recovery from one to the other. And that's one of the the big drivers for our infrastructure this this next year. Also, we're looking at doing some switching of a total of twenty-nine switches that are ready to be replaced and this next year. We have moved away from Cisco and went to Aruba switches, which we've done at the city hall. And so we're moving to do the Aruba switching over at the other facilities. And for our security this coming year, we're looking at, we don't really have a disaster recovery for I.T. And we're looking to work on creating that for this year and then estimate the cost for next year of what we've decided to do, we will build out the next year of what we've done, put together. So that's, it's. Then one more item that we have for security is we're looking that we want to encrypt the data between the sites. We have dark fiber from site to site, but that does go from, doesn't go directly here. And it goes to like the Comcast center, and then from Comcast to here. We're looking to put encryption between the sites, so that as the data goes across, that it's encrypted. And that is it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, back. So the next several slide will go into the fleet replacement program. We'll start from a broad summary, and then we'll go department-specific. Just to provide some quick historical context, when we onboarded the enterprise fleet program two years ago, the intent was to replace all of our white fleet, the non-specialty vehicles, which were well past their lifecycle, as well as to save equity in terms of when you replace vehicles sooner, you you earn more equity rather than holding them for a long period of time. And then new vehicles translate to better saving in terms of car or fuel and maintenance. And so those were the main reason for this program. We've done that for the last two years. We're going to fiscal year twenty-four, and we're asking to replace nineteen vehicle, nineteen vehicles. Okay, so the fiscal year twenty-four fleet cost, the total cost is going to be three hundred and five thousand. For, if you annualize that over five years, it's one point five million. And we are asking to replace approximately nineteen vehicles. Long list, busy slide, but we'll go into the the department-specific here in a bit. But there are a couple of things I want to point out on this slide. If you notice on the bottom part of the slide, there are five vehicles that are highlighted in red. Those are the new vehicles that we've added on this year that were not initially a part of the fleet program because of additional operational needs. For example, the deputy fire marshal was added recently, as well as the three S R O that were hired through the grant program, so we needed those vehicles. And then the office of the city manager, we had a vehicle that we lent to the assessor as well as the the facility team, and we need a a new vehicle for central staff to to attend seminar, things of like that nature. And then, as you notice, there are some footnotes included with some of the vehicles, and those are there to denote the aftermarket cost to outfit some of these vehicles, things like lights, markings, et cetera, that are part of the lease payment. So it's already included in the lease payment. Okay, so breaking down by departments, starting with police, we are going to replace eleven vehicles and three S R O for a total of fourteen vehicles. Those, that cost is two hundred and thirty-six thousand for fiscal year twenty-four, which equates roughly to one point one million over five years. And and the reason is obvious, these are the P D vehicles that are high in mileage, and they are needed for daily operational control, as well as to help decrease the maintenance costs. And they do include include the new S R O vehicles, like I mentioned, and the S R O vehicles will be equipped just like a regular patrol vehicles, just to maintain that operational flexibility. And if you have any question, cheaply, we can also chime in as well. Okay. For Public Works, we are asking to replace two F two fifty. These are the street vehicles that are used during snow operation, as well as work on street, maintaining our streets. They are currently two thousand and fifteen, and they are showing signs of wear and tear. And the cost to replace these two vehicles is approximately twenty-two thousand. Annualized over five years, approximately a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. These vehicles will be equipped with the plow and spreader. That's going to be handled within our, the Public Works C I P program. For the fire department, we're asking to replace two vehicle. One vehicle is for the battalion chief. That's the F three fifty. That one does have a lot of specialty equipment, so the outfit, the aftermarket is a little bit higher. That's a conservative budget, just to make sure we can stay, you know, on 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 budget. And then we're also adding, like I said, the deputy fire marshal F two fifty for a total cost of thirty-two thousand. Annualized over five years, approximately one hundred and sixty-three thousand. Most of these vehicle are operational in nature, and so there, you know, there's a a need, a strong need to replace them. And then lastly, the S U V for the office of the city manager. This is a new request, approximately thirteen thousand annualized over five years, sixty-five thousand dollar. This one is going to be similar to the, most of the P D vehicle, except the outfitting. So we deducted that 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 outfit cost from the lease payment. I believe that is it. Any question on the fleet?
There's a couple of questions. So just to clarify, you are, you talk about replacements, but you're actually replacing fourteen and purchasing five new.
That's correct. We added five new to their program.
And just for the office of the city manager vehicle, what was the utilization of the prior vehicle before you loaned it out to justify buying a new one?
Yeah, it's technically not the office. It's it's for all city hall. So every everyone who's in this building, we're sharing one vehicle for everyone in this building. And but that vehicle had to go over to the development services, because we've added an additional code enforcement officer. We're also supposed to bring on the building official. So our building inspector has a car, and also our code enforcement officer has one. And then we're going to say, okay, building official and extra code enforcement, you're going to share one vehicle. So there's, it's not like that we're we're getting a vehicle for everyone. The city hall vehicle is not just for city hall as well, it's for the city assessor. So the city assessor goes out to inspect properties as well, and then everyone in the city, in city hall who needs vehicles for for different operational requirements, whether it's to go to bank or go for any other meetings, right? So there's there's different meetings that we go to, whether they're economic development meetings, different conferences, driving governing body down to Richmond, right? So there's, there's different things that we have to do here in city hall. So we all kind of share, share a vehicle for that purpose, but we had to loan it out because we we were getting low for development services, so that that's what that vehicle is for.
Thank you.
And then just a couple of extra notes for fleet. So, go ahead. So overall, for for Public Works, just for when you see So, go ahead. So overall, for, for Public Works, just for when you see their vehicles, just know that that, that's not all in the general fund. Those vehicle costs actually get spread out to the enterprise funds as well. And then you saw the price tag over five years, about 1.5 million. So about $300,000 of that is from the new vehicles, and the rest of that's from inflation. So again, we're, we've seen massive increases in cost for, for new vehicles. The sad part is, had we locked in, so we were supposed to do a big purchase in FY '20 right before COVID. That was delayed. Had we locked that in, we would have saved the city a lot of money because we would have been, those would be the, the newer vehicles we would have right now. But we waited a year and we got punished from COVID inflation because of that. So wish we had a time machine and we can go back and, and, and address that one. So, but we are seeing inflation related to that one. So facilities, I'll start it off, and then Calvin will, will pick up with the other departments. But this is the big ticket item when it comes to facilities. Again, every, every department was taken care of during the 2000s in terms of facilities, as were our schools. The only ones who were left were City Hall and Public Works, or really Calvin's entire department, the Community Development Services, which some of them were working in City Hall, and some of them are down at the Public Works Building. So that was the last one. They have the oldest building in the city, and we need to take care of them. And we're looking at utilizing, again, a combination of general fund and water and sewer funds to go ahead and acquire an industrial building for their usage. But again, my goal is to utilize development proceeds to pay for that, to, to limit the impact on our taxpayers for that. But again, we're putting that on the budget just in case we feel we need that extra money. But we probably won't, and instead we'll utilize that funding for any renovations that needed for that building to make it work for our community development department, and more importantly, for our schools as well. If we're going to, if we're going to be moving their transportation employees and facility management staff and resources over to, to that new industrial building, so it'd be kind of like a shared, shared facility for general services and public works. The, the goal is to hopefully renovate their facilities from where they're moving out to, to support kind of vocational training, technical training, any other kind of unique classes that, that they want to offer. And you'll see a project later on where they're looking at modular buildings for that. That may go away as, as we, if, if we can achieve this project successfully and then help, help them move over there. So this is a big ticket item. This is the last major facility item that, that the city had left. After this, of course, it's all going to come in the 20, in the 30s and 40s, and even we're seeing the impact right now. It's going to be a lot of renovations of all those buildings that, that we acquire, so that's going to be the, the next step after that. But again, my goal has been to address those two, City Hall and Public Works Building without impacting the city dollars. So again, I'm, I'm going to bring kind of a development plan for, to finance that project to not impact the city. And I'll be followed up by Calvin.
Any questions on the Community Development Building?
Good evening. I'm Calvin Odell, the Director of Community Development. First slide today is police station improvements. We have the leak repairs to the building. That is currently, we did a leak test on the building, and we are having the specifications and drawings prepared to go out in the RFP. The RFP will hopefully go out within the next 30 days here. But we are anticipating that those leak repairs will carry on. There is some funding in '23, but they will carry over into FY '24. Building caulk and paint, that is a project that we are also looking to address. May wind up in the same scope, but we are currently carrying it as a separate project. We're just waiting to see if we can get economies of scale through this RFP, try to address that. And the precast stone work, there are some images after this slide, I believe, that will show you the condition of some of the precast stone on the front of the building. It's in pretty bad shape. That was a comment from the person that is actually doing the specifications when he toured the building. He wanted to know if we had any intentions of addressing that, and I told him it was already in the CIP. But also the PD electrical equipment. Now, we are trying to phase that to after the leak repairs are completed. But a lot of the electrical equipment that is in question, is in question because of the leaks in the building. We did have a, lost a switch. I think we've lost a transfer switch all in that room due to the water infiltration. So as soon as we get the leak squared away, we'll be looking to replace all of the electrical equipment in that room. And the rooftop HVAC is, all of the rooftop units are original to the building. So you're talking, they were probably set on the roof in 2006, and the building was occupied in 2007. So they have reached their life expectancy, if you would, and we're just kind of limping them through. Lots of replacing parts at this point, but we do need to completely replace those units and set up a new depreciation schedule there. As I was mentioning, there are some images. So these are some of the leaks in the electrical room. You can see it's, we had originally thought they were roof leaks, but the leak testing has shown that these are actual building leaks, not coming from the roof membrane, but coming through openings in the outside walls. And here's a picture of the precast stone. You can see the caulk pulling away from the joints and lots of rust showing. Not sure if it was just bad precast or what, but there's actual reinforcement steel rusting through the precast stone. And this is a picture of the flooring that will be replaced with, as an ARPA project, I believe. This will be repl, the flooring will be replaced. This is the fire station slide, improvements to the fire station. We're looking at a cost of 70,000 in FY '24. A lot of the fire department projects that were in the CIP previously were able to be covered by ARPA funding. But this slide really gives you the details of what's going on at the fire station. We'll have the digital LED sign installation project in '24, and the bay fan installation in '24, and that's to keep air flowing in the bays. The rest of them will happen in FY '25 and subsequent. The public parking lots project is really about lighting and resurfacing. We are resurfacing the fire department parking lot this year. We will then move on. In the next slide, you'll see a list of our anticipated schedule for parking lot resurfacing. But we're also updating all of the parking lot lighting with LED lighting. That's been a really successful project, has actually been, there's been a lot of cost savings in that project. So we believe this estimate may be a little more than we need to cover it, but the community center lot. But this is, it's really nice to have those, you know, energy reduction, and they're also much brighter, light the, light the area up better. Looking at the parking lot resurfacing, the Costello Park, there are some areas that are in really bad shape. And because of, because of the condition, the, the parking lot being relatively new, we don't want to allow water to continue to infiltrate in. So we are looking at the community, community center primary lot immediately after addressing some of the worst areas of Costello Park. There's already some cracking, not much alligator cracking in the community center parking lot, but any cracking is going to allow moisture in, and it's going to turn into alligator cracking. And at that point, you've really lost the, the battle. So. Transportation projects, the culvert projects, I think most people are familiar with the battle we've been having with culverts. The good news is, is that we, Mosby was completely replaced with a box culvert. Denver was replaced back in 2016. And currently, as we speak, the four culvert barrels that go underneath of Railroad Drive are all four being worked on. Two of them are completely rehabilitated already. The other two are in progress. So if you guys have seen the cones along Railroad Drive, you don't really usually see people. They're all up under the street working on the culverts, but the good news is that project will be done very shortly. We'll be turning all of our attention, the RFP is on the street for Russia Branch under Manassas Drive. So hopefully, we won't have much to talk about with culverts moving forward. But the Manassas Drive at Public Works Culvert will be the very next one in our list to address. Those are not major culverts. They're not carrying something as significant as Russia Branch, but they are in pretty poor shape. They're corrugated metal culverts, and Manassas Drive is a very substantial roadway, especially to the city of Manassas Park. So we'll be looking to address that, probably put it out to bid, get, complete a design in '24, and try to get it out on the street in '24 if we can. Street resurfacing and maintenance, we have really a few lines that fall into this category. Street improvements is written resealing is the general street resurfacing line that we carry in the CIP. We've been able to allocate 353, or 353 for that so far in FY '24 throughout the process. Additional streets projects was really a catch-all to cover major sidewalk groupings of sidewalk and curb and gutter replacement, concrete. And then if we had any sort of shortfall with our street improvements and resealing, we have also used additional street projects to sort of match that money if we have a major resurfacing project. But Manassas Drive primary extension resurfacing, there is a primary extension program through VDOT, and Manassas Drive does carry a primary extension from Mathis Avenue to the city boundary over near Lowndes. And that will, should have qualified last go-around, and it certainly qualifies, but it didn't get funding. We're very hopeful that in '24 we will get that funding, and that is 100%. We don't have to match that. So we will be resurfacing all of Manassas Drive again. And some people may say, well, you just resurfaced it six, seven years ago. What about the rest of the city? Well, this is 100% funding. It's an opportunity that VDOT gives us. And if anybody's paying attention, there's a lot of water breaks, a lot of gas work. There's a lot of holes put in that pavement, so it doesn't stay pretty for long. So it's always due for some work. We're looking at spending about 1.85 million in FY '24 on resurfacing activities and additional streets projects. And the majority of that will be the 1.4 million from VDOT if we get it for the primary extension work. Downtown transportation infrastructure, this is, this is to address projects that will improve transportation through the downtown. We're talking the addition of sidewalks, traffic calming measures, and crosswalk improvements, you name it. But this is, this is really, the time is now. We have added new buildings. We're working on new buildings in, in our downtown. People will need a sense of place. People will need that pedestrian safety and accommodation, and we're planning on spending 600,000 in FY '24 towards this effort. Traffic signal improvements. We have an ongoing project to upgrade all of the equipment in our traffic signals. This was originally envisioned to cover like the back plates and any aging equipment inside the cabinet. But recently, we've heard complaints about the Opticom system. Opticom is a great system, but it does start to fail, parts need replaced. And it's like any other piece of traffic equipment, you are better served if all of your cabinets match, so that you can keep one type of equipment in inventory. So this project, this new Opticom project, will cover getting the latest and greatest version of Opticom at every signal in the city. And for those who aren't familiar with what Opticom is, that is your preempt that the fire department and police can use to trigger the signal to turn green in the direction that they're traveling, so that if there is a queue of traffic in front of them, that queue of traffic can clear, and they can more efficiently get through the intersection. We're looking all, at total cost of, for traffic signal improvements is 145,000 in FY '24. The concrete intersection at Owens, we spent a lot of time going up to Owens Drive and making patches, both where the large trucks slow to turn right onto Owens Drive, and where they slow on Owens Drive to make a left onto Euclid. Both of those areas, because of the weight of the vehicles, suddenly slowing down at the stop bars or slowing down to make the turns, are buckling and pushing up the pavement. It's not really fixable, no matter how much depth of asphalt we put out there. We had recently done a project on Euclid where we increased the pavement depth. It did not stop the buckling of the pavement, but concrete certainly will. Concrete is what you see out at Route 28. If, if a truck can buckle concrete, it's a, it's a really big truck. But unfortunately, we don't have any other solution. We spend a lot of time, we get a lot of complaints from the businesses down there about the condition of the pavement. This may be the only way to sort of quell those complaints and stop spending a lot of time resurfacing in that area. But it's total anticipated cost of 500,000 in FY '24. Transportation master plan. Now, this project, we've talked about this for a couple of years. This has been in our plans. Manassas did the same exercise. You can have piecemeal projects, but at some point in time, it's very essential to stop and look at the big picture. And what are the key projects? And let them guide your CIP plans, let them guide your comprehensive plan. Let them guide the decisions that you make for funding, so that you always have an eye on your priorities, and you don't lose sight of those. But this, this project, we're really at a point now, we've got so many transportation studies going on, that this would simply just fill in the blanks. There, you know, we've got so many active transportation studies that this would simply pick what those studies didn't do, apply them. And we'd really be looking at Manassas Drive, Euclid, Mathis, not so much 28, because 28's been addressed with so many of its own studies, and now there's an innovative intersections project going on that touches Manassas Park. So this would really just fill in the blanks of those studies that are ongoing and give us a large picture of what Manassas Park should have. And this may be attached as an appendix to the comprehensive plan at some point. But it's a crucial piece for us to have to guide staff decisions. BRE parking garage, the parking garage is actually out to bid. We're not quite sure what the price is going to come back in after the bid, but right now, we know that we're anticipating at least a $2.5 million shortfall. Because the garage was relocated from its original proposed location at the bays tract, the downtown development shifted it to where it should be, which is right across from the existing platform. But in that relocation, since BRE had already started the design, there are costs associated with that. And there are also changes in the layout of the garage, definitely beneficial to the city, having an entire level dedicated to public parking. But there is a cost in that that the city must absorb. This right here is to absorb, that is to show that the city has to pay this out. This is not a city fund, it's not a city managed project, but we do have to contribute to the funding.
And just a reminder too, it's, it's really, we own the, the ground, the garage itself, the first levels ours at all times. The upper three levels are intended for BRE usage, and we'll have kind of a shared maintenance for, for that garage. We're also applying for another state grant as well to cover any other additional gaps. Because as you see across the board, you're just seeing inflation everywhere. So we've already submitted another grant, like Calvin's team secured this 2.5 million. We're aggressively pursuing more funding sources as well.
The systemic safety improvements project, it's a, this is a federal highway grant program. And this is actually, we're very lucky to get this kind of money. There were some concerns about safety all along the Manassas Drive corridor. But this is, this has looked at, and this is ongoing, but the actual projects resulting from the study will be executed in FY '24. But this has looked at the entire length of Manassas Drive, that is our primary corridor, looked at some of the safety issues. And as you can read in the slide, this is not one type of improvement. This is a myriad of improvements to try to make the city safer for not only drivers, but for pedestrians, for bicyclists, and everyone. But this all together, we're looking at a million dollars in FY '24, but it's all grant funding.
So the registrar is not here. I think we forgot to include her in the invite, so that's my fault. But if, if you have any questions for, there was one project, voting machine replacement. This has been on the CIP for, for quite a while. If you have any questions for Patricia, please send, send me the email, and I'll, I'll make sure to follow up with her. But this is a self-explanatory project. We need voting machines for elections, and it's time to replace them. So this is the estimated price tag. Any questions for me on this?
I had a question, Calvin.
Yes.
On the street resurfacing?
Could you speak into the microphone? Thank you, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Question on, uh, uh, street resurfacing, where does Digital Drive fall in that plan?
You're talking about the, the, the annual replacement?
Resurfacing.
Oh, I think she's talking about.
Street improvements and resealing.
Yeah.
So we did, we did the Fugro analysis where the, so VDOT has all the pavement in Virginia that they're responsible for, scored by this really nice analysis truck that Fugro has put together. We were able to get that company to come out under VDOT's contract and drive everything in the city and give us a new type of assessment of all of our pavement. So what we did was we sat down with that scoring, we reviewed it. We looked at staff recommendations from the Streets Department, what their priority, what they thought their priorities were. And we sat down and we And we sat down and we sort of tried to fit last year, this FY23 budget. So those projects are already in the works. They were approved by the governing body. Digital Drive.
Digital Drive, yeah, that, that one scored in bad condition, but actually that, that one was kind of the straight line challenge. So there's other roads that are bigger priorities because of the types of cracks that impact motorists. So unfortunately, what is it, like 40% of our roads are in, are in really bad condition. So, and, and they were all very close. So a lot of it becomes, we have a set amount of budget. So we're playing, we're paying Tetris, playing Tetris essentially with which roads we can fit within the budget each year. But we're pulling from kind of the worst quality roads. And then also, there's some roads that where the entire length of the road may not have been considered the worst, but there's specific segments within that road that if you measured that, that is like the worst part of the city. So we were looking to address those areas as well. And one of those examples was in Greenshaw that popped up this year. So Digital Drive is on our radar. It just, it didn't score as badly or it, because of the type. If you notice, if you're driving on Digital, I live off Digital as well, it's kind of a long line, right? So when you're driving over it, you're not necessarily.
Well, actually there are two. And we're going to have to start cutting the grass in the middle of the street pretty soon.
Yeah, there's some maintenance issues there, but, but there's other parts of it, like especially if you go on the west side, there's a lot of, a lot of streets where, was it the alligator cracking where it's kind of circular? Really causes damage or issues to vehicles and those, that's what we want to prioritize. But Digital is on our radar. It, it is considered a, it, it did score very bad, but that's because of how the length of that, that crack on that road.
And I guess because that's where you travel most, you see that. I mean, I don't go all around the city all the time looking at the cracks in the streets.
But it's a major road, yeah.
Every day that I drive out and I go, it just keeps getting worse.
As Lozlo said, the problem with Digital is it scored, it scored almost identically to so many other streets. That we're going to have to sit there and take that large lump of streets that all scored the same and just sort of see what fits in the budget each year, you know, what mixture. Well, it's right now, what we do is if we think we're going to be able to afford three to four street sections, we may have the contractor give us estimate on seven, eight street sections. And so that we can look at those estimates and maximize all the money that we have budgeted. But, you know, then those other projects that don't get paved that year go back into the mix and we try again next year.
Start all over again.
Digital, will it be paved next year? I don't know. We really haven't started looking at what we're going to do with the FY24. We're still waiting for Branson to come out and finish the, or do the FY23 paving. But we'll do the same exercise we did last year, which is taking the Fugro data with the streets recommendations, with citizens' complaints and seeing what are, you know, how to best maximize the pavement funding we have allotted for that year.
I understand. Also, when, when we don't have hard winters, it, it helps. Because you don't have to be scraping them all the time.
It's a challenge because it's an art, a science and a financial game, right? Because we have, we have the scientific data now with the Fugro study. It gives the, the actual data for how bad the road is. It's an art because we rely on our, our public works crew who are driving the streets every day to tell us of those areas that are really bad, where are the, what are the worst sections across the city that are part of those bad streets that we really want to target that, that, that really cause issues for, for motorists and our residents. And then again, it's a financial game, like how much of those air, of those streets can we fit into the budget as well, so. But again, we're trying to increase this number. That was the goal, one of the governing body priorities. It was to kind of double the funding that we have for street improvement because we hear it from our residents consistently. So we've been averaging before, $250,000 each year. Going up, you know, 350, 400, it's going to get over 500,000, I want to say by FY25 or 26. So we are going to be doubling to achieve the objectives that the governing body laid out for investing more in street improvements and resealing. And then hopefully with economic development, we can add even more. My long-term goal right now, we, we get funding from VDOT every year for, for transportation purposes. That's really funding a lot of the operating items and, and our streets division. I really want to eventually, when our economic position improves to, for the city, to fund our streets division staffing and then really just use that VDOT money for resurfacing to kind of grow that number even further as well. That's a long-term objective that we have.
Thank you.
Just quickly on elections, what is the expected replacement cycle for voting machines?
I want to say, I want to say it was eight to 10 years, but I'll have to follow up with Patricia. Because this has been on, on the CIP, I know, for, for a few years. So it's, I, I, it's definitely longer than, it's not just every three, four-year thing. I think, I think it, they do last a little bit longer, but I'll, I'll follow up with Patricia and get back to you all. But this has been, I think, on CIP since I started, so it's been, it's been a while.
Yeah, we haven't had new machines for, ever.
Yeah, yep. Okay, moving on to schools, we have Mr. Eric Neff. Sorry, and I mistakenly left this slide. We can actually skip this slide because that's a summary of the five year, which, unless you want to talk about it, but we can go straight into FY24.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Eric Neff. I'm the Executive Director of Operations and Student Services for the School Division. I have about eight projects here to present tonight. The first one is a project that has been ongoing for a number of years and it's a replacement of the individual classroom units. Those units which operate on the R22 refrigerant. That refrigerant is very difficult to find now and also if you do find it, it's very expensive. So those classroom or window units are being replaced at Cougar and at the high school as they fail. And so we are replacing anywhere from four to six of those every year. And a lot of those units are still the units that were originally installed, installed when the high school was built in 99 and Cougar was built in 2001, I believe it was. The second project is the replacement of buses. In the justification, it says that we currently have four buses that have hit the 15-year life cycle. That is actually incorrect. It is six buses after talking with Mrs. Hurley this, or yesterday morning. And so we do have buses that are, aren't on order. As the city manager mentioned with inflation, there's also been supply chain delays, which have caused a lot of projects to be pushed back for us. But the buses have been the primarily one, one. We ordered two in 21, 22. Those buses we hope to have here by March the 1st. I've been told that the air conditioning is being placed on them right now. And we have two on order that should be here by June the 30th, but it is a constant battle to replace buses. We do have, like I said, six at 15 years. We have two at 14 years and we have four at 13 years. So the replacement cycle is two to three buses per year moving forward over the, the next five years. The third project is the upgrade of the division cellular communication systems at the elementary campus. If any of you live over near Cougar Elementary, Manassas Park Elementary School, cellphone, wifi. It's very difficult to get service over there. Our IT department has been exploring opportunities to expand cellular services, looking at boosters, repeaters and towers. This is a project that we plan to complete in FY24, which will allow, you know, for a layer of safety for our students and our staff at the school. The next project's been moved up a couple of years from FY26 to FY24 and that's the roof replacement at the middle school. You can see a picture here of the old roof, but we did experience some issues at the beginning of the school year with mildew and mold at the elementary, or at the middle school, which required complete cleaning of the sixth grade wing, quite an expensive task for the division. So it's a project that we've moved up from FY26 to FY24 and we anticipate the cost, based on the cost that what, what it was to replace the high school roof to be close to $2 million. The next project is a replacement of the original chiller from the high school, estimated a cost of $200,000. Certainly based on something that was placed in the high school in 2004, there will be energy efficiency and cost savings in the long term for the replacement of that chiller. The next project is a replacement of the coral risers. Those risers are used by our middle school and our high school choral students for performances. They're all used, also used by our theater arts students. They were purchased in 2015. They are a little wobbly at this point over use in, over the past nine years. So we're going to replace those next year as well. And the last two projects are technology infrastructure upgrades. I don't understand a lot about these two slides, but Mr. McCormick has assured me that basically what we have to do is replace the infrastructure so that it will handle current data rate at 100 times more than what we're currently handling it. Basically, it eliminates the bottleneck that occurs from all the single units moving through the system. And the last project is the Extreme Cloud IQ Pilot, which is the wireless controller. Basically, this talks to our access points, which allows our students to access the wifi with their laptops in the, in the school buildings. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Would this be a good time for a, a break? Administrator Barry kindly picked up some refreshments for us. I wanted to make sure we're about, we're just over halfway through, it looks like?
Yeah, just over halfway. Your discretion.
Okay, maybe a 10-minute recess?
Yes.
Okay.
I know, we're at like page 55 or slide 55.
Well, I noticed they're not numbered, not all of them.
Yeah.
Well, there is one, but.
It's just the slide slides that are. I was sort of looking for the slide numbers. I could see how far in we were.
That does take about 50 seconds.
100, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the smack.
It's always my right. Because at that point, like I just go.
Correct. We're doing it here.
He should be cut bad.
When I get to him anyway.
Yeah, you catch me.
And as always, Mrs. D, Mrs. T always says, when you see John, tell him I said hey. So I was with her on Sunday.
Yeah, those are pictures of the leak at the police station.
It was a birthday.
They were from last year.
So probably yes, because I've.
And her son, her caregiver, her main caregiver.
It's only getting worse.
And she's really a super lady. As soon as she got there and they talked, you know, and of course they compared everything. And Maria's probably 70. She's not young, young. But ends up they have the same birthday. And she has just, she's perfect for girls. She's a, she's a black lady. She's from, I'm going to say she's from the Dominican Republic, one of those countries.
No, her birthday was on.
No, it was February 14th, yeah.
All these years.
So, yeah, we're down in that area. I'll just drop in on her. She just gets so frustrated and I can understand. I, I can't imagine being in the situation she's in now. But the neighbors are all good. Steve comes over, he'll bring her food. He brings, he makes chili and he'll bring her a pot of chili bowl of chili. Steve was over, Steve was over.
Besides, Steve and, I think the only other person that made her, the strings behind Steve.
Yeah, and I do, yeah, they're all gone. She has, what are their names? I want to say Blevins, that doesn't sound right. But Rich and Jackie, they came down here from New York and they are really, really good neighbors to her. I mean, he drops, if, if she calls him, I don't care what he's doing, he drops and comes. And they're just really, really good to her. Oh, I can see him sitting there. You tell your pappy I said hi to.
I would tell her that.
Well, Michael, you better get back here. I might have eaten his.
Steal his plate, save you a trip.
Michael, you're wondering where to, where to go.
See, I, I'm pretty sure I set a plate down there. I said, you better get back here. That'll disappear.
That'll be where he's gonna go. Gonna walk away on his own.
Do you guys take a break after an hour?
No, I mean, we go by the number of slides here, so we're, we're up to slide 55. I figured out a 94 or a bigger spot. Don't waste our, she's, she's missing out on the refreshments here.
I'm not going to say what she's saying.
Uh-oh. Protect the, protect the building.
These really thin cookies are some of my favorites.
Okay. And if you like the taste of them, then. Can't just have one, right? Go ahead, we'll make more.
It's pretty good. Yeah, it's, it's moving.
We're already halfway through those. No need to wait until the end there.
I, I like this way better, but.
See, I never saw, saw my plan. We've started this way. I mean, you know, one, one night out of the year, you just cut through and done. Not when you get the initial hearing.
These are just the, in 30-some years here. These are actually the best presentations that I've ever seen. Most thorough, most easiest to understand.
Okay, cool.
Because I mean, they're, they're pretty easy to understand.
Yes, they're very detailed and they've got, they want you to take a look at what they, you know, they got it set up.
Yeah, the last two, the best presentations I've ever seen.
Good. Well, I'm happy to move in that direction in that school. So it's good.
I got it. I got my annual march, so I got a physical. Trim band.
That's the best physical I've ever gotten. Better than what you do when you get to doctors.
There was a washout dog. I don't know if you've seen, but cones over.
Yeah, we're trying to get on there.
Just past Railroad Drive.
That'd be nice.
I guess towards Signal Hill, on the right-hand side, there are some cones there.
Oh, yeah, I knew about that.
I take, I take a walk.
So you get to see it personally.
And I saw. It'll allow us to approach safely and call the individual out and avoid any excessive use of force or any type of force at all. And also for anybody that comes up missing, gets lost, should be able to locate them quicker and be able to clear areas and see if we can locate them. So this was brought up to me a few years back when I took over as chief, and I think it's a great piece of equipment that our officers can utilize. So we're requesting ten units. They're kind of expensive, but I think it'll pay off in the long run. And I'll take any questions.
Questions, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. So Fire Department has three items that we'll run through real quick. The first one is, oops, go that way. First one is the outfit cost for the two vehicles that Keith talked about earlier. The first one was for the battalion chief, which serves as our unified command truck currently for both PD and Fire for anything we have public safety-wise. Pretty, pretty big outfit for that cost, seventy-four thousand dollars. The second one would be for the new deputy fire marshal that the governing body approved in a few months ago. We currently do not have a vehicle for that individual, so we'll have to get that, that vehicle for that individual and put a outfit cost to it. The second one is to replace the special services vehicle, which is our UTV off-road vehicle. When we got that vehicle, we got it back in two thousand and twelve through a UASI grant, so at no cost to the city. But we are looking to replace that two thousand and twelve vehicle now, especially since we have two large parks now to, to take care of. And the third item is the replacement of the two thousand and thirteen ambulance. We call it a medic unit because we, we staffed with paramedics. It's gonna be four-hundred-and-ten-thousand through FY, starting FY twenty-four. What we're looking at there, of course, is inflation cost, but we're also looking for the extended build time. It used to take anywhere from six to eight months. Now we're, we're at fourteen to twenty-four months to build that. We just got one in October of last year that we ordered a year and a half prior. Our vendor has actually ordered the chassis for us for the FY twenty-four purchase, should the governing body approve that, in July. That, that process has already started, kind of cut down that, that time a little bit. So those would be the three projects.
Good evening. I'll be presenting ten total projects this evening for parks and recreation. Of the ten, only two are new or unique, the other eight are existing carryover projects from last fiscal year. So first, we have the outdoor staircase and walkway installation, Signal Hill Park, comes in at ninety-two thousand dollars. Essentially, what we're trying to do here is replace the existing wooden staircase with a concrete staircase and walkway. That'll allow us to have much greater long-term longevity in the structure, but also to, it's gonna significantly reduce our maintenance cost over the long haul. This current structure is about fifteen years old and it's in very bad disrepair. We're kind of at the point now where making repairs are, you know, very temporary at best, and it really needs to be, you know, rebuilt. Next is a retain a wall demo rebuild and basketball court resurface, Castello Park, comes in at three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand. This project just entails demoing, tearing down the existing stone wall, rebuilding a segmental wall in its place, and then milling up the existing asphalt, resurfacing official court lines, new basketball hoops, new fence to complete the project. The two need to happen simultaneously, just given the nature of the, of how the two projects kind of work off of each other. And again, massive cracks, fissures in the asphalt impacts competitive play. And then as far as the wall itself, you can see in the picture, chunks of mortar, concrete, stone are falling out into the adjacent sidewalk. Next, we have the wellness center strength equipment purchase. This is at the community center. This comes in at one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand. So this is a total overhaul of the strength equipment. This includes free weights as well as selectorized machines. Industry standard recommends seven to ten years for replacement, so we're looking at fourteen years for one side, ten for the other. So, so both, in both cases, we're, we're kind of at that point where we do need to, to make, make the move. And back in FY twenty, we did the cardiovascular overhaul, so the two, once we get this done, it'll be a while before we need to, you know, move forward with any additional equipment replacement. Next, we have the walking path bollard replacement in Castello Park, thirty thousand dollars. So we're looking to remove the twenty-one existing, and really that's seventeen, because we've got four offline as we speak. Bollards replaced with seven LED options. We'll fix five of them to the existing light poles in the parking lot, and then two will go to the actual building itself. On either side of the front of the building, one side will hit the pathway adjacent to the playground and pavilion. The other side will be the rear pool deck towards the veterans lot. Just with the, the technology is, you know, so antiquated at this point with these existing bollards, we can't really get replacement parts. And when we do find parts, they're incredibly expensive, so this will allow us to be more energy efficient and save some money in the long haul. Next is our special event equipment project. This is kind of explicitly for the downtown plaza. The goal here, it's one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, but sixty thousand of that is earmarked for FY twenty-four. The goal here is to have a continuous kind of allotment of, of funds coming in every year to help support resources, to keep a continual, you know, event presence in the downtown. In particular, the sixty thousand represents some, some purchases kind of necessary for next year. A large Christmas tree, plaza decorations for the holidays, heaters, large heaters, and a sound system, pretty much makes up that, that sixty thousand dollars. Next, we have the perimeter caulk and white coat replacement, both at Signal Bay Water Park. These come in at twenty-nine and eighty-five thousand respectively. Both of these projects were last completed during the two thousand and fifteen Signal Bay Water Park renovation. So time-wise, these should be done about every, the, the caulk should be done about every five years, the white coat about every seven to eight. So we're certainly at that point where we really do need to make this, make this move. Again, the risk here by delaying this is compromising the, the, the concrete and beams by allowing water to seep in. So we're just trying to avoid that and getting this rectified before that happens and, and causes a, a lot of damage. Next, we have the Signal Bay Water Park furniture refresh. This comes in at fifty-five thousand. We did a furniture refresh at the community center this fiscal year. This is kind of the, the other side of that. You can see there the picture, one of those chase lounge chairs is, is pretty rough shape. Most of our equipment is, is similar in, in nature. So aesthetically, it creates a problem, but also from a safety and functional standpoint, that's also problematic. So we're just looking to replace a hundred of the lounge chairs, fifty dining chairs, and twenty picnic tables and kind of overhaul that whole equipment or that whole furniture line. Next, we have a zero-turn mower replacement, fourteen thousand for twenty-four. The goal is to move forward with two units in twenty-five, which will be twenty-eight thousand. The Parks Division manages over four hundred acres of parkland, about seventy-nine, eighty acres of that is mowable space. You know, with Blooms Park kind of on, on the docket nowadays, we definitely rely on these zero-turn mowers to kind of like be efficient and, and gets, you know, all the fields at Signal Hill and then all the large open space at the, at Blooms taken care of. So in twenty-four, we're looking to replace one of our original units. We have a fleet of four, and then in twenty-five, we would be replacing units two and three. So those are our three oldest units. And lastly is a LED transition at the community center. The goal here is to spend fifty thousand in FY twenty-four, just to basically start the transition to all LED platform. We currently have fluorescent and HID lighting options. So with LED, we can become much more energy efficient. It'll say, it will have much greater longevity, you know, and just the practicality as far as the versatility and application, just makes a lot of sense to go completely convert to LED. So that's the plan there. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Hello again.
Good evening.
I will start out with the community development, specific fleet purchases. These are vehicles that we can't get through the enterprise program. But there is, most of these vehicles are split between funds, some of them are not. If, if like our flusher trucks are dedicated to either water, sewer, or stormwater. But all in all, we're looking at three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars in costs in twenty-four, and there is a breakdown of the five-year between the different funds below that. But in twenty-four, we're replacing a large dump truck. It's proving to be very tricky because the market for dump trucks is really hot right now. But that was, that dump truck will be split between all three funds. But the flusher truck that will replace the current flusher truck, one forty-two, that is, that is just, that flusher truck is just for water and sewer, and that's financed over five years. So we won't be buying that outright. Public Works equipment, this is all of the tools and specialty equipment that Public Works uses to maintain the infrastructure throughout the city. Altogether, two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand dollars in FY twenty-four. But we're purchasing a new rubber tire loader. That vehicle, that rubber tire loader was actually retired at the beginning of snow season, was a safety hazard. So we are currently renting a rubber tire loader to get us through snow season, and then we will have to, if we have any need to use the loader, use a loader to like empty the rugby yard or anything like that, we'll be renting until we can get a replacement in hand. But the towable air compressor is still on the street, but regrettably so. It's, it's becoming a maintenance issue. And then the new UTV to replace the current streets UTV, we use that for not just special events, but also for marking outside, or streets for sweeping, when we have to go out and put the stakeout signs ahead of our sweeping operations. So that vehicle will be placed in twenty-four as well. Miscellaneous projects. The first one is, we have a beautiful city hall here in Building C that belongs to Norton Scott, but we need to decorate these with holiday decorations, like a, a real city downtown, so that when people are here during the holiday season, they have the real sense of place. But a total anticipated cost, and this is a rough estimate, fifty thousand in FY twenty-four to get holiday lights on these buildings. Property demolition, this is, this is a project that we carry annually to cover any cost of demolishing house structures that have been declared unsafe or unfit and that the owner has failed to correct. So we're not anticipating any coming up in FY twenty-four because we're not in the process. We haven't declared anything unfit or unsafe. So we're not, we're not budgeting anything in FY twenty-four at this time, but we typically would carry twenty-five thousand dollars a year to cover projects like that. Water and sewer enterprise fund projects. The first is our RUMS line. That's repair, replacement, upgrade, and maintenance, and this is sort of a catch-all for our very large repair projects, you know, as things fail at the pump stations, the water tanks, the lift stations, those are immediate emergencies that can get very costly very fast. So we do carry a substantial amount of money in that line to cover that. We're covering, carrying nine-hundred thousand in FY twenty-four. But again, there's no specific projects, and what we try to do with the remainder of the money is to address any, any I and I issues that are especially low-hanging fruit, you know, sewer, excuse me, sewer line relining, manhole relining, manhole replacements or grouting, things of that nature. Our phased water system improvements, phase six, will go out to bid this year. It was designed several years ago, but phase six will finally be put out to bid, and then we'll move on to phase seven, phase eight, and phase nine. In FY, in FY twenty-four, we're anticipating probably spending the remainder of the, the phase six money and also starting design work on phase seven. Phase six will be this section of Yost, Martin, and Lambert Drive that you see in the illustration. Phase seven will be this section of Manassas Drive between Kent and Baker, or actually to the city's western limits beyond Baker. And then phase eight will address Manassas Drive from Courtney down to the intersection of Cabell. Stormwater enterprise fund projects. Again, Stormwater Enterprise has its own RUMS line, repair, replacements, upgrades, and maintenance. This is a catch-all, but we've really been expending most of this money on dilapidated corrugated metal pipe. Seems to be the story of our, our lives lately. But we're, and is carrying two-hundred-and-ten-thousand in FY twenty-four towards this effort. Connor Center maintenance projects, again, corrugated metal. Most of these pictures that you see taken throughout the Connor Center are where corrugated metal lines were put in place as opposed to precast concrete, reinforced concrete. They've started to rot and deteriorate. In some instances, you can't even see the line when you try to televise it, it's just completely collapsed. So we again are trying to address these issues throughout the Connor Center right now. We're spending, anticipate spending one-hundred-and-five-thousand in FY twenty-four towards this effort. TMDL reduction projects, this is, Lozlo spoke on this a little bit earlier. We used to say Russia Branch Stream Restoration was gonna be. So we're not anticipating any coming up in FY twenty-four, because we're not in the process, we haven't declared anything unfit or unsafe. So we're not, we're not budgeting anything in FY twenty-four at this time, but we typically would carry twenty-five thousand dollars a year to cover projects like that. Water and sewer enterprise fund projects, the first is our RUMS line, that's repair, replacement, upgrade and maintenance. And this is sort of a catch-all for our very large repair projects, you know, as things fail at the pump stations, the water tanks, the lift stations. Those are immediate emergencies that can get very costly very fast, so we do carry a substantial amount of money in that line to cover that. We're covering, carrying nine-hundred thousand in FY twenty-four. But again, there's no specific projects, and what we try to do with the remainder of the money is to address any, any I and I issues that are especially low-hanging fruit. You know, sewer, excuse me, sewer line relining, manhole relining, manhole replacements, or grouting, things of that nature. Our phased water system improvements, phase six will go out to bid this year, it was designed several years ago. But phase six will finally be put out to bid, and then we'll move on to phase seven, phase eight, and phase nine. In FY, in FY twenty-four, we're anticipating probably spending the remainder of the, the phase six money, and also starting design work on phase seven. Phase six will be this section of Yost, Martin, and Lambert Drive that you see in the illustration. Phase seven will be this section of Manassas Drive between Kent and Baker, or actually to the city's western limits beyond Baker. And then phase eight will address Manassas Drive from Courtney down to the intersection of Cabell. Stormwater enterprise fund projects. Again, Stormwater Enterprise has its own RUMS line, repair, replacements, upgrades, and maintenance. This is a catch-all, but we've really been expending most of this money on dilapidated corrugated metal pipe, seems to be the story of our, our lives lately. But we're, and is carrying two-hundred-and-ten-thousand in FY twenty-four towards this effort. Connor Center maintenance projects, again, corrugated metal, most of these pictures that you see taken throughout the Connor Center are where corrugated metal lines were put in place as opposed to precast concrete, reinforced concrete. They've started to rot and deteriorate, in some instances, you can't even see the line when you try to televise it, it's just completely collapsed. So we again are trying to address these issues throughout the Connor Center right now, we're spending, anticipate spending a hundred-and-five thousand in FY twenty-four towards this effort. TMDL reduction projects, this is, Lozlo spoke on this a little bit earlier. We used to say Russia Branch Stream Restoration was going to be where we got, you know, over ninety percent of our total TMDL reductions for the final cycle. But actually, Russia Branch through the golf course is probably not our best candidate, as we're learning, we're starting to look at some of the flat branch tributaries. But stream restoration still is best bang for your buck. So we was, stream restoration will probably get us the majority of the way to our TMDL reduction requirements. But we also have the Connor Center Pond One retrofit that was delayed because of the village project implementation, we did not want to do that project. And then all of a sudden have it filled up with silt and sediment from this activity here, so we actually, there'll be a slight redesign to accommodate the village, and then that project will be put out to bid. And then other TMDL projects is identified, most of these have not been identified. When we finish the stream restoration, when Connor Center Pond One is on the books, we will have some remainder out there, whether it be suspended solids, nitrogen, phosphorus. There will be some leftovers that we need to address, and we will handpick at that point the projects that get us those at the less, at the least amount of cost. But altogether, we anticipate ten-point-nine million in FY twenty-four.
And some positives with the, the new strategy, it's the cost should likely be a lot less for the streams that we're evaluating. The challenge is we're going to have to work with some HOAs in our city to, to get the approval, but at least, you know, the streams within their HOA area should be restored and, and beautified. So hopefully we get cooperation, but we're hoping to save our taxpayers a significant amount of money by pursuing a smarter strategy to less costly projects with the help of, of the private sector contractors who've kind of evaluated this for us. Do, to accomplish our, our TMDL goals at the lowest cost possible.
Any questions?
Thank you, appreciate it.
And that's all we have for tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Oh, just, just as a kind of timetable, so in March, I can be back here for any questions you have about the CIP. You can email me questions in advance if you'd like, and I can prep them and, and come back here and give you guys answers. And then in April, we'll be asking that you, you do a vote, but I'm also going to be able to update you on kind of the revenue position for the CIP and what we could afford, and kind of the, the recommended timelines for some of these projects as well.
Thank you, great. Wonderful. Okay, we'll move along then, no unfinished business to attend to, no report of special committees. Informational update from community development staff, Administrator Barry.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. The only thing I do have to report is we are moving along with the phase four of the downtown rezoning. We did get a resubmittle late last week and early this week, so it is out for staff comment and review. And so hopefully we'll be bringing that forward to you in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't see any questions, very good, thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, the time is eight-thirty-three.
And that's a record.
Thank you for your support on that one. And that's with the break too, so that's, that's great.